He's coming.
Yeah, she's there.
They need to walk.
Whoever's going sixty in the bathroom is slowing down everybody else. That's personal.
This will allow for one person to be allowed to go.
I'm from California, that's only possible.
Yes, yeah, that's true. That's true.
Okay, calling meeting of the Village of Skokie Board of Trustees to order Monday, November third, two thousand and twenty-five. Start by being led in the Pledge of Allegiance by our village clerk, Manal Desai. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen.
Okay, welcome to the Village Board meeting again, Monday, November third, two thousand and twenty-five. I call this meeting to order, and I ask again that our village clerkman all decide. Please call the roll. Trustee Pierre Slovan?
Here.
Trustee Schechter?
Here.
Trustee Kimani Levy?
Here.
Trustee Robinson?
Here.
Trustee Iverson?
Here.
Trustee Lisa Levy?
Here.
Mayor Tennis? Here, and we have a quorum. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Is there anything that anyone would like removed from the consent agenda? If not, I'd ask for a motion, please. Trustee Robinson, seconded by trustee Lisa Levy, thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll? Trustee Robinson?
Aye.
Trustee Iverson?
Aye.
Trustee Lisa Levy?
Aye.
Trustee Pierre Slovan?
Aye.
Trustee Schechter?
Aye.
Trustee Kimani Levy?
Aye.
Thank you, the motion passes. The next item on our agenda is the recognition presentation for Skokie's Green Businesses. Assistant Director Cassie Carroll and Business Development Specialist Anthony Santorelli of Energy Sense Resilience Center are present tonight to speak about the program. The green businesses received their awards earlier this evening. Trustee Gail Schechter and I had the pleasure of meeting with them at Sketchbook, at Sketchbook, one of our award-winning sites, and I would now like to invite all of the green businesses to come forward to be recognized in front of the Village Board. And Anthony, the floor is yours.
Do we have a presentation?
Yes. Next on it.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, folks, we don't have a PowerPoint for you tonight, and we'll be as quick as we can. My name is Anthony Santorelli. I want to highlight my colleague Cassie Carroll here and Jay Raboyo somewhere in the audience here. Oh, there she is. We're with the Energy Sense Resilience Center, and we've been helping with the Skokie Green Business Program, a recognition program. We're very excited. Skokie is the very first municipal partner for our statewide green business programs. We're very proud. We have some great local green businesses here. Just want to say a few quick notes. The Skokie Green Business Program encourages direct engagement and environmental impact reductions toward the village's Environmental Sustainability Plan. And it's a recognition program for businesses who implement at least one new green business practice beyond the actions that they've already taken. So they already are doing many green practices. We're just trying to help them on their continuous journey of, or their journey of continuous improvement for sustainability. And I guess in lieu of the PowerPoint, we will just go ahead and announce our recognized businesses. So we're very happy to announce Collective Resource Compost Cooperative, Edward, oh, thank you. Edward Jones Investments. Haven Funeral Home and Crematory. Needs and Wants. Panoramic Images. C. Jane Sparkle. Sketchbook Brewery. Take Flight Spirits. Village Inn Pizza. Will's Place. And Zorica Luchek State Farm. We're just very proud and happy to work with these businesses and help them on their green journeys. We will be continuing the program next year, and we invite other businesses to join. And I don't know if the mayor has any other comments. We were very happy to have our Sketchbook networking event earlier tonight.
Well, I was glad to be there. Thanks again to Sketchbook. They're not normally open on Monday evenings, but they open specially for this group, which was great, and it's wonderful to see so many of our small businesses, small family-owned businesses. Havens have been in business in Skokie for over a hundred years, and here they are.
And I want to give a very special shout out to Lisa Sandsenbacher, the Sustainability Coordinator, and Rod Tenelli, Economic Vitality Manager. They were integral in making this program possible.
And I'd also like to shout out, give a shout out to the Sustainable Environmental Advisory Commission under the leadership of Chair Jenny Grossman. That commission, for many, many years, has done important valuable work in this community. The village's Comprehensive Sustainability Plan was led by that group, and this, this effort is an outgrowth of that plan. So thanks to, CAC is what we call them, thanks to CAC too.
Yeah, I had a quick question and a comment. First, congratulations. Secondly, how might one become a member?
Well, so we had a website, the QR code on our PowerPoint, but I think we can get that out somehow to folks. Check out the Skokie website, we'll make sure we drop a link for that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
We'll give them just a moment to clear. So the next item on the agenda is public comment. We will have two public comment periods tonight, the one now and the one at the end of the meeting. Each speaker is allowed up to three minutes. Typically, we limit first one and the last one to ten speakers, this year because of the abundance of folks who want to address us. I, we are not going to let all of you speak before we get to our work. That just wouldn't be practical, and I appreciate your understanding on this. But for tonight, the first round, we will include fifteen speakers. This gentleman got up, I can see, but there was another gentleman who I was told was here, yes, sir. This gentleman got here very early, so we're going to let him go second. So we're going to go, there will be fifteen of you, so one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Oh, you're just standing? Okay. You know what, we'll sort it, we'll keep track, we'll sort it out. But I would encourage you, because we do, we do limit public comment, because we have work that we have to do. So if there are those of you who came together, if you have similar sentiments to express, you may want to coordinate with each other and decide who's going to be the spokesperson, I would remind you that it is always your option to send us your comments in writing. We get all of those, we review them, and we appreciate them. So for those of you who might not get a chance to speak tonight, that is an option. We'll start with fifteen, everyone will be allotted up to a precise three minutes. We'll then go about our work, and then at the end of the meeting, we will have another period, and that one I will limit to ten, as is our policy. So, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is David Dawkins, and I'm here to talk about the continuation of my issues and journey to get my dad taken to Lutheran General Hospital due to capabilities they have that aren't here. Today, we met at Lutheran General with EMS Director of Lutheran General, most of Section Nine, Dr. Hazard, at the request and direction of Mr. Robinson. As you recall, we first requested this back in May, and at that meeting, we were, Mr. Iverson asked us to get a letter from the doctor stating it was medically necessary for my father to go to that facility. We provided that to you on August first, received no real resolution of the issues today, but when we went to this, we were provided this map, and this might help understand the problem. So on this map, you see in the upper right-hand corner, there's a section called Region Ten and Region Nine. Skokie technically sits in Region Ten, which goes from the Chicago border all the way to the Wisconsin border, all the way along the lakefront, you know, basically Martin Grove border there, parts of Glenview, all the way up into Lake County. So what I learned today is technically, because we're in Region Ten, the capabilities that are available at Advocate Lutheran General are also available at Northwestern Lake Forest. So if you're persistent about the current point of view that we need to go to a Region Ten hospital, we would request kindly that we change that request to Northwestern Lake Forest. I don't think that that's the proper way to do that, because they always encourage you to go to the nearest hospital in an emergency situation due to a capability like that. So the EMS Director, Dr. Hazard, is going to reach out to Dr. Lot in Evanston, and, you know, my request is that Mr. Robinson follow up with Dr. Hazard about today's meeting, which was a very productive one-hour-plus meeting, and that we do this. But ultimately, we need Skokie's cooperation to execute whatever is decided, and we need somebody to liaison with the Illinois Department of Health, Department of Public Health, and these region heads to make this a reality for my veteran's father, who will be celebrating Veterans Day next week, along with his sixtieth wedding anniversary. So we need your help with this, and I appreciate your attention to that. One other administrative item, I have refiled some of the Church Street claims for the potholes that have ruined our cars. If the village management team could reach out to Cook County and be helpful in expediting that, that would be helpful to us in putting closure on that issue with that, I would take the remainder of my time for another day. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir.
Thank you, Mayor Tennis and Village Council. My name is Dan Goldwin. I am the Jewish United Funds Chief Public Affairs Officer. On October seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, Hamas brutally attacked Israel because they and their allies do not believe in the Jewish right to exist anywhere, especially in Israel. Every day since Hamas's attack, Jews all over the world, including here in Skokie, have been confronted by anti-Semitic vitriol, harassment, physical attacks, and even a shooting and attempted murder nearby in Chicago. Hamas unleashed something on October seventh that will not soon, if ever, be put back in the bottle. Unfortunately, as everyone here knows, just one month ago, on the two-year anniversary of Hamas's attack on Israel, a group of Jewish children were anti-semitically harassed and attacked in Shawnee Park by another group of children. One of the Jewish children was shot by a pellet or gel gun. The Jewish children did not seek a fight, they did not instigate it in any other way other than simply being Jewish and public. As a parent myself, I am forced to wonder how these Jewish children will soon feel safe again. Skokie is not a big city. The Jewish children will see their attackers again and again over the course of their lives, at school, in the park, or just walking down the street. lives, at school, in the park, or just walking down the street. So the question that Skokie leaders and parents need to ask themselves, what brought us to this place, and how can we fix it? Sadly, this kind of harassment and attack is not unique to Skokie. It is what Jews are facing across metropolitan Chicago, on college campuses, outside synagogues, at public gatherings, and even in Chicago City Hall. This has to stop, and Skokie can help. I want to thank and acknowledge the Skokie and related authorities who moved quickly and within the confines of the laws that relates to perpetrators who are minors to address this issue. The Skokie Police Department, the Cook County State's Attorney, Mayor Antennesse, the Skokie Park District, the Skokie Human Relations Commission have all answered this attack with seriousness and great care. JUF has been and is continuing to work with each of you to ensure that there is accountability for the students, and at the same time, that Skokie schools, law enforcement, and elected officials are focused on making sure this does not happen again, and if it does, that it is properly and swiftly dealt with. JUF is here to be a partner. The attacking students need to be given a chance to learn the meaning of what they did and to understand the harm that they caused. This was not a "kids will just be kids" kind of moment. Kids are not born to hate. They learn this from somewhere. Now it is up to Skokie, parents, and mainstream Jewish communal organizations to come together and to develop and implement policies and practices that teach children and others what should be simple to understand. Jew hatred will not be tolerated and is not allowed in Skokie. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goldwin.
My name is Sean Jacobs. I'm Jewish. I'm a volunteer and member of the Chicago Jewish Alliance. Tonight, I'm here as a result from the October 7th, 2025, anti-Semitic incident in Shawnee Park. In 2007, I went to Poland, specifically the concentration camps with the Holocaust survivor, where I got to see exhibits of the 6 million Jews clothes stripped from them while there, as well as the gas chambers where the 6 million Jews were murdered. From what happened in the Holocaust to October 7th, 2025, from October 7th, 2023 in Israel to this incident on October 7th, 2025 in Shawnee Park, I'm concerned about this incident being not an isolated incident. This is homegrown, and I'm concerned this is more than just an isolated incident. In terms of the statements that came out from the Village's Law Enforcement Department, the original and the updated statements failed to provide that these Jewish youth had their rights and freedoms violated in terms of the disorderly conduct of the Village Code's stipulations. Number one, what was violated was making, aiding, or assisting in making any improper noise, riot disturbance, breach of the peace, or diversion tending to breach of the peace. Number two, engaging in or aiding or abetting any fight, quarrel, or other disturbance. Number three, disturbing any whether it is service, funeral, public or private meeting in place of amusement or assembly of persons. Number four, collecting crowds of unlawful persons, purposes, or for any purpose to the annoyance or disturbance of other persons. And number six, assembling with two or more other persons for the purpose of using force or violence to disturb the public peace. My recommendations are, in addition to supporting Daniel Schwartz, Danny Schwartz, from the Chicago Jewish Alliance, from his Human Relations Committee, recommendations are also to, for the law enforcement department here, to provide, in future hate crimes, if they do occur, who-in-one factors influence the offenders in hate crimes, as well as monthly, quarterly, semi-annual, and annual updates in terms of hopefully decreased amounts and severity of the results from hate crimes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobs.
Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Janice Kessler. My husband and I are Jewish homeowners in Skevinston, and for those of you who are unfamiliar with the term, it means that our home is on the border of Skokie and Evanston. I am a proud volunteer with the Chicago Jewish Alliance and a blessed grandma. Often, by myself, I take my two young grandsons to a variety of parks in Evanston and in Skokie, and I want to know that my community protects us every day and that we didn't make a mistake moving here from the safe haven of Buffalo Grove. I would have never imagined that I would need to speak in Skokie about the safety of Jewish children. The Human Relations Council took too long to correctly state the incident as a hate crime. That communication took way too long. I believe this only occurred after visibility by the media and the public that is here as well. I am asking for this board to firmly guide the Human Relations Council into accountability and transparency, which has been lacking, and thank you for this opportunity to speak today as a volunteer and a grandma. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kessler. Sir.
My name is Steve Nauman. My wife and I have lived in Skokie since 1978. Almost 50 years ago, Skokie became known as the village that stood up to the Nazis. Unless the board acts, Skokie will be known for its silence. We need to hear from the mayor and all members of the board publicly at a press conference condemning the October 7th hate crime, using the same words that the mayor spoke three days ago at a press conference in Evanston, denouncing immigration actions, and I quote, "This is deplorable. We need to stand together and fight this in any way, shape, or form that we can." I'm glad that my parents are not here today, because what happened on October 7th...
Stop it.
Okay. Let me finish.
You've stopped the clock. You can just...
Yeah, we remind them what they saw in Germany and probably experienced. History tells us where this can go if it does not stop now. We need visible action on the part of the village. This information on the resolution of this hate crime cannot be made public. My question is, what will the village do to assure accountability? I have a suggestion. If you cannot compel them, ask the parents in each and every one of the minors that participated in the hate crime, not just the minor that used the gel blaster, to attend one or more facilitated sessions, so they can try to understand the consequences of their children's actions, and like Dickinson's ghost of Christmas yet to come, understand what their children's future could be if they do not change their behavior. After all, parents have responsibility for their children's conduct. Maybe the parents will agree, maybe they won't. To paraphrase what the mayor said Friday, "The village needs to stand together, work as hard as we can, and do everything that it can do within the limits of the law to help its Jewish residents so this does not happen again." As Mayor Tennesse said in her October 31st message on Facebook, "Everyone has a right to feel safe in their community." Finally, we still do not know who made the decision to implement the restorative process for this hate crime. Surely, identification of the office that made that determination is not subject to confidentiality. Thank you.
Good evening.
My name is Adrienne Nauman. I'm the wife of the previous Speaker, Steve Nauman. It's hard for Steve because he never met his grandparents on his mother's side. They were, they were killed in the camps, so he gets, and his parents fled, had to flee Germany, and so it's tough, but we got to speak up about this. We think the police have done a really great job in Skokie, but some decisions aren't theirs, and furthermore, they can't be everywhere all the time. So we really need to hold anyone, we have to help the police and hold anyone accountable. So we all know what the problem is, or most of us admit what the problem is. The question is, what's the remedy? Because that's where the, that's the rub. And that's where the other speakers that are speaking on behalf of the Jewish residents of Skokie are trying to get at. Now, there was a speaker at the previous meeting, Ms. Gold, I don't remember her first name, who is a retired police sergeant from the Chicago Police Department, who specialized, my understanding is she specialized in working with juveniles, and she had a very good idea that we didn't really pick up on after, after she spoke. And that is, when, to adhere to the law, the Juvenile, the 261-page Juvenile Protection Act, I did look at it, being an attorney, I couldn't help myself. It should go through some, there should be whoever the decision-maker is, and I echo my husband's request to know who that is, because I don't feel anybody's being upfront about who made that decision, but whoever that is should make the decision to send them through the process in the statute, which requires judicial supervision and people reporting to the court at periodic intervals. That way, there's some control over the situation, what these juveniles are doing, and there's a consequence to their actions. I think that's something, that's a specific remedy that's legally, my understanding is it would legally comply with the Juvenile Court Act, and it would benefit the Jewish residents of Skokie, who now are just really petrified that this whole Jew hatred thing is affecting them locally. And as we all know, and I pointed out before, it escalates, and we've had numerous attempts on people's lives and people who have been killed. Thank you very much for your testimony.
Thank you, Ms. Nauman. Mr. Whitaker.
Good evening. My name is Christopher Whitaker. I am a Skokie resident and D-65 parent. I am speaking today because our first job is to keep our kids safe. Our second job is to keep our neighbors safe. And as long as there is ICE and Border Patrol roaming our streets with weapons of war, we are not safe.
I, I know, I'm going to stop the clock for just a quick second, please. I know you're all happy and those important things being expressed tonight. I know you're, I, give me a moment, please. Thank you. There are important things being expressed tonight. We are timing everyone, so when you clap, the clock's going to keep going, and that's just going to impede our ability to hear the important words of the speakers. So as much as I know, you want to affirm, you know, and give, let the folks who are speaking know that you agree with them or not, please just let them speak. If you want to applaud at the end, understandable, but we will, we will not stop the clock. So go ahead, please.
It's fine. I built it. So there's, there's those that believe Skokie will be safe if we stay under the radar, we don't make too much noise, and that will, that will keep us safe. I hope the events of last week dissuade anyone of that notion. They are here, they are wielding weapons of war, they are kidnapping people who live and work here. Rapid response teams estimate that between 14 and 16 landscapers, not criminals, not terrorists, landscapers, were taken on Tuesday alone, and that was before Greg Mulvino came in here with his helicopters buzzing Bessie Roads and Walker Elementary and the high school, and detaining more people and causing all sorts of trouble up the road in Evanston. I urge the board that this is not the time for half-measures. Skokie must do everything within its power to protect our neighbors. The proposed enhancements to our welcoming ordinance put forward by Trustee Schechter will do just that, and I urge the board to pass them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Whitaker. Ms. Pochon.
Good evening. I am also a Skokie resident. I am also here to urge you to please strengthen the proposed resolution to protect our immigrant neighbors. Please incorporate Trustee Schechter's recommendations. The current resolution is pointless, the way I see it. Without signs to notify ICE and CPP agents that they may not use village property, and without any consequences if they do, what effect will this resolution have? As written, it is nothing more than lip service and will do nothing to protect residents. Masked armed men in unmarked cars are targeting and kidnapping innocent people based on their perceived race and class. They are terrorizing our neighborhoods, beating people, pulling guns on them, and using chemical agents against them. In any other moment, if unidentified masked men tried to kidnap someone off the street, bystanders would try to stop them, and police would pursue them. Now we are being told that doing what is right is illegal, that we are required by law to stand idly by and allow people to be disappeared. But we have a history of refusing to abide by violent unjust laws around here. Just as when Chicago passed an ordinance to refuse to comply with the Fugitive Slave Act of 1850, and residents organized to protect black people from the goons sent to kidnap and enslave them, we must again refuse to allow these racist abductions. Regular people are courageously doing everything they legally can to protect each other, risking their own safety and freedom. I refuse to believe that the best our elected officials can do in the face of this racist, fascist assault on our community is to add a toothless sentence to an ordinance that these rogue agents will never read. Skokie residents are almost 40% foreign-born. We are a community of immigrants from all over the world. That diversity is our beauty and our strength. Other local governments in areas far less diverse and progressive than Skokie have passed resolutions adopting signage. Skokie should be a model, not trailing behind. Why is our government less courageous than those of DuPage, Will, and Lake Counties? The proposed resolution needs to be strengthened to ensure that the village will, one, post clear signage at village-owned areas and place barricades where possible; two, provide signs that other government and private entities may use to also prohibit civil immigration enforcement activities on their property; three, investigate agents' violations of this law and others; and four, partner with state and local agencies, including the Secretary of State, the Illinois Accountability Commission, and the Cook County State's Attorney's Office to record and report violations of state and local laws. Playing it safe will not protect us, it only emboldens bullies. The more of us who stand up, the safer it becomes for others to do the same. Please join the growing number of government entities taking action to protect all of us. Do not leave the burden on the most vulnerable. You can't pass this week's resolution and claim the moral high ground. That requires action.
Carrie, I'm sorry.
And align your actions with your words.
My name is Kimberly Polka. I was not going to speak tonight, but you didn't get to 15, and I didn't see anybody else in line, so here I am.
You can be next.
Did I, did I cut you off?
Kimberly, keep going. We'll get them.
Okay. I am, I'm going to be quick for a change anyhow. Most of the people who know me know that I am here because I spoke at the last meeting about the ICE issue, and I agree with the people who have spoken before me, so I'm not going to speak about that today, even though it is why I'm here. But I also want to say that as a Jewish person, the first time I heard about what happened in Shawnee Park was at the last meeting. We have to find a way to be able to show the entire community we stand together, like this man said, and I don't know what that is. I know that it's complicated when there's children, but I do think that by trying to figure it out, the village is perpetuating divisiveness, because it probably feels like their community is alone, and I'm a part of that community, and I had no idea. And that is very upsetting to me. So we have to find a way to show all of our neighbors that we stand together when something horrible happens, and there has to be a way to do that.
Thank you, Ms. Pochon.
This is very short. My name is Catherine Eady. I, this week will be my three-year anniversary of moving to Skokie, and I moved to Skokie to provide a safe place to raise a family, and right now, Skokie does not feel safe. And I say that not just about what's happening in our town since Friday, but about this incident that happened on October 7th, that it took outrage on Facebook and in the media for the town to even make a statement about. But I want to talk about Friday today, because Friday, a helicopter stood over my house for hours. And that day, ICE agents entered my neighbor's home without permission, without knocking, without warrant. And the thing is, we're here to pass a resolution about signage, and the thing is, if that's in Skokie public spaces, what stops them from entering our homes? And the thing is, my neighbors called the police. And the thing is, my neighbors called the police, and the police said, "There's nothing we can do." And I am deeply concerned, because the ICE agents came into the house to harass the contractors that were working there, the contractors that were there in vehicles with signage of the company they were there for, and they still went into the house without a warrant, without knocking, to harass them. This is not okay. We need to be able to rely on the police to protect us, we need to be able to rely on the town to protect us, we need to know this is a safe place, and right now, it is not. So I'd urge us to pass this resolution, but do more. There needs to be more.
Hello. My name is Morgan Kropinski. I am a Skokie resident. I live on Harding Avenue. On Friday, I had workers at my house with American Company, two American citizens. They were profiled based on what they looked like, and there was no reasonable suspicion for them to be stopped. It's sad that in Skokie, we have a place where everyone is welcome, and we have both hatred for Jews and immigrants. I, I urge the board to go farther than a statement. I urge the board to be leaders, both locally and with our other branches of government. I urge the board to pressure our congressperson, Ms. Shkowsky, and our senators to work to stop the extremism on all sides of the political spectrum. We need to stop with the rhetoric and start with common sense solutions. Passing an ordinance for hate speech or signage doesn't solve the problem of extremism. We all need to step up, be reasonable, not have extreme views, and it starts locally. And I ask the board to take greater action and not just rely on statements. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kropinski.
Good evening. Thank you for giving us this opportunity. I'm Elliot Raff, Skokie resident. And I'll just say, I wasn't planning to speak, but after hearing the other speakers and outside, I, I'm compelled, and I'm compelled by my Jewish values, to speak in support of my refugee and asylum-seeking friends and neighbors, whose children are afraid to go out, and who they have to explain to eight and 10-year-olds why they can't go to the library, they can't go to the playground, why they're being kept home from school, and what to do if they get a call that mommy or poppy have been detained. And two generations ago, that was my grandparents. They came here as refugees from war-ravaged Europe, as so many of us did. So, again, the resolution's important, but the enhanced resolution so that our neighbors, our friends can be safe from these intrusions is, is just absolutely critical, and I implore you to please adopt those as part of the program. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Raff. We have time for three more speakers.
Good evening, Skokie City Hall. My name is Matthew Armour. I would like to address, to follow, add to some of the previous speakers about the October 7th anti-Semitic hate crime that occurred in Shawnee Park. In 1816, Frederick Douglass, Frederick Douglass called Freedom of Speech a great moral renovator of society and government. And it's at this city hall that we're exercising our First Amendment rights to freedom of speech. I came here today due to the disturbing rise in antisemitism, not only in Chicago, not only in Skokie, but across the whole United States, following the October 7 terrorist attack against Israel. We've seen a disturbing rise in antisemitic hate crimes nationally. According to the FBI, over 67% of religiously motivated hate crimes are antisemitic in nature, or have, are motivated by anti-Jewish bias. And I would strongly urge the Skokie Village Hall, City Hall, to take strong and unquestionable action against this hate crime that occurred just last month. The so-called, if you'd allow me, the so-called, or the antisemitism that has occurred, has had deadly consequences. Just in May this year, somebody with a fire, just in May this year, someone in Chicago got a firearm on a plane and traveled to Washington DC and murdered in cold blood two Jewish Americans, Yaron Lyschinsky and Sarah Milgram, due to the war in the Middle East. We cannot let the antisemitism go unchecked, and I'm here to stand with the Jewish residents of Skokie, Chicago, Jewish residents all around the world, and draw a firm line that antisemitism cannot be tolerated. Thank you for your time, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Armour. Is there anyone? No, please.
Hi, good evening. My name is Reena Ratanowski, and I'm here to speak as a parent regarding the antisemitic incident at Shawnee Park on October 7th. I've been to Fairshire, Skokie Parks, and this really, this incident was really quite disturbing. So, I wanted you to picture your child, or any child that you know, at a park, they're playing tag, and then all of a sudden, they see, they, they see bullets flying, they, somebody feels themselves getting shot, they hear others yelling that they should be killed. And then, all of, and then this is no longer a game, it's no longer a game of tag, now the, now they, they feel endangered, this is not a game, and they're terrified. So then they go home, and they recognize that the adults that were meant to protect them, like the police, like the park representatives, like public officials, did not stand with them, and they could not protect them. You know, if this was your child, how would you feel, you know, seeing them come home in fear and then have this, this concern, you know, hanging over their head that they're not safe? And so this is how Jewish children, on October 7th at Shawnee Park, this, this was their experience. And this shouldn't have happened. They were, they had experienced an instance where this was, they weren't playing, they were trying to survive. And this, this, again, should not have happened. The response seemed as though their fear and experiences were minimized and ignored. When adults fail to respond with urgency, support, or clear acknowledgement that these experiences are real and important, this lack of appropriate response really does send a message that their concerns just are not responded to, and that their safety is not as important as perhaps other groups of individuals. I am grateful that steps have been taken, that truth was finally named, and this attack was labeled a hate crime. However, our children should not need public advocacy, public diplomacy, for this to have happened, it should have happened sooner, it should have happened with more support. You in this room, as well as any other, as well as other public officials, do you have the power and obligation to ensure that all children, Jewish and non-Jewish children, feel safe in our parks? And so today, I ask you to acknowledge publicly that the incident at Shawnee Park on October 7th of this year was motivated by antisemitism. I ask you to commit to better training and community engagement around antisemitism awareness for local law officials and public institutions. I ask you to affirm Skokie's historic legacy by standing with its Jewish residents, especially the families that were impacted by this.
Ms. Ratanowski, I'm so sorry, but your time is up.
That's all, that's all happened.
Thank you. Okay, if there's no one else, are you having over there? I wasn't sure.
Hi, I'm a physician in your community, and I work in, I will, I used to work in Tapestry 360, which is down the street. We are underserved, we treat refugees underserved in terms of like undocumented, anybody, everybody. Our patients are scared. They don't just come from Skokie, they come from Niles, Lincolnwood, everywhere. This, the resolution, I am a Skokie resident, I've been here for five years, I treat my own community. I'm here with you. Our patients, our people are scared, whether they're Jewish, whether they're immigrants, we're all scared. It is hard to be a doctor and have a patient in the room and be in a soft lockdown, because ICE will take them if they walk out of the door. So I can only ask you three things that I ask myself when I practice medicine every single day. If not now, then when? If not here, then where? If not us, then who? Who will fight for us? Who will protect us? Who will save us? There is no one coming, no other country, no other place. It is our responsibility to save ourselves, to go outside, to be part of the whistle response, to save each other. The ordinance has to be strong. We, as a community, have to be strong. I am the first person they call to face ICE. I am a brown woman, I am an immigrant's child, I don't look white. I will say the words that no one else here says, "Duskei." I am not a white woman. I am an immigrant's child. I am a foreign child person here. I am not white. They will look at me, they will push me aside, and they will trample me, to take my patients, whose lives I have taken an oath to save. You must do more. Our community, all of you, need to do more. At the end of the day, we cannot let this be another genocide or Holocaust. It is on us, we have seen it too many times. All I can say is, I beg you all, do the right thing. Do the right thing for all of us, no matter the color, the race, the religion. Do the right thing.
So that, that means, I was clear that we're going to allow 15 speakers, and that's five more than, than our standard practices. There will be another time for public comment at the end, we will, at that point, there will be time for up to 10 speakers. But right now, our colleague, Trustee Alison Pierce-Slovan, has a few words.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for everybody who has attended this meeting this evening. We recognize that antisemitic acts strike at the heart of who we are as a community. Hateful incidents create fear, isolation, and anger. I commend the Skokie Village Police Department for understanding the gravity of antisemitism and any other hate crimes, and for acting decisively. Their responsibility is not only to find the perpetrators, but also to ensure that the victims and every resident, Jewish or otherwise, feel safe, respected, and protected. The police must ensure impartiality and sensitivity when handling any case. Our communal responsibility is to allow them to do their job without conjecture, especially since we are not privy to the facts. Many people have accused the Village Board of Trustees, the mayor, and the police of not being transparent during this investigation, as numerous community members didn't find out about the Shawnee Park incident until weeks after it occurred. I would like to strongly state, there is nothing nefarious about the lack of communication from the village. It is not the responsibility to note, of the village, to notify residents unless there is a threat to the community. It is our responsibility to protect those involved, especially if they are minors. I personally became aware of the Shawnee Park antisemitic incident the evening of October 8th, after the holy day of Sukkot, because a victim's family chose to reach out to me. I remained in touch with the family during the police investigation. I did speak to someone in the Cook County State's Attorney Office, but I want to make this clear, they were not involved in the investigation. Since the night of October 7th, the incident was classified as a hate crime by the police department. I would like to make something perfectly clear. The police did their job. Though the community has a right to express their concern, the outcome of the investigation was not due to public outcry. It was based on facts, following a thorough investigation. I would also like to caution everyone who is not closely involved with the families or the investigation, to be careful about conjecture, rumors, and accusations. False accusations and rumors can cause deep and lasting harm, both to individuals and to broader community. They erode trust, damage reputations, and even can undermine legitimate investigations. The Skokie Police Department deserves our thanks for quickly responding to antisemitism and other acts of hate in the village with professionalism, empathy, and respect in a sense of justice. We must understand that it was classified as a hate crime not because of the community, because the Skokie Police followed proper procedure. The Skokie Human Relations Commission is working with reputable Jewish organizations to ensure that proper protocol and process are upheld, focusing on accountability as well as education about antisemitism, helping young people learn from their mistakes and re-enter society as responsible citizens. It is our responsibility, as a community, to foster mutual respect and find our commonalities if we're ever going to erode hate. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Trustee Pierce-Slovan. The next item on our agenda is a presentation on aging, an Aging Needs Assessment for Skokie by Mr. Jason Echols, manager of planning and evaluation by Age Options.
Thank you all so much for having me tonight, for welcoming me to this space. I believe we were planning this back in September or August, to do this presentation, so thank you so much for having me. My name is Jason Echols, and I'm the manager of planning and evaluation at Age Options, and tonight, I'm going to share--
Mr. Echols, I'm going to stop for just a moment. We're going to let the room clear, I want to just be--
Sure.
--so that we can all give you our full attention, if you don't mind.
You're welcome.
We'll let the room, the room clear. So, thank you.
Thank you.
As soon as everyone is kind of, is leaving, leaves, we'll get the door closed and we'll We're almost there. Okay. As soon as our guests find seats, we'll get started. There are plenty of seats in the front row, gentlemen. Don't be shy. All right. Thank you all for your patience. Mr. Echols.
Thank you so much. Thank you all. And thank you all so much for inviting me here into this space tonight. So tonight, I will be just talking a little bit about what Age Options is. We have some demographics about Skokie's aging population, and I'll share some results from a needs assessment we did about aging in suburban Cook County. So first of all, Age Options, we are-- So first of all, Age Options, we are an area agency on aging. In the state of Illinois, there are 13. We receive a core amount of our funding from the Older Americans Act, federal dollars, that are given to the state of Illinois, and that, those funds through the Department on Aging in the State of Illinois are given then to these 13 AAA's, and then dispersed in locally in communities. We are the designated area agency on aging in suburban Cook County, so all of Cook County minus the city of Chicago. In our area, we have the highest number of older adults of the AAA divisions, over 600,000 older adults in suburban Cook County. And tonight, if I say the words "older adults," what I mean is 60 and older. That's the designation for the Older Americans Act. Most of their services are centered around people 60 and older. And for planning purposes, I may also say 50 or older, because those people are growing older, and almost at the age of 60 in the age of services under Older Americans Act. At the core of what Age Options does is that we hope to see people thriving as they age. When I present to people, I say, "We're all people, we're all aging, we all hope to thrive." So. And through our network of local partners, we do provide several services for older adults, people who care for older adults, and for people with disabilities. Here in Skokie, one of our main partners is North Shore Senior Center, so you may be familiar with that. We provide some funding to them to have some of their programs. We also partner with other community-based organizations to provide these services. So next, I'm going to give a quick demographic snapshot of Skokie. Some of this may be familiar to you all, living in this community. Up here is, I apologize, all of the data and demographics I'm about to give are from the U.S. Census Bureau, the American Community Survey. Up here is the age ranges of Skokie residents. There's 25, a quarter of the population is under the age of 20, 35% 20 to 49, and that means over the age of 50 is 40% of the population here in Skokie. Again, as I said, older adults for purposes of Older American Act services, 60 and older, that's 27% of the population, and that 50 to 59, 13% of the population. So over the next decade, this is the group of people who will be aging into services, and hopefully staying in the community and aging in place, staying in the community they're a part of, contributing, and being part of that community long into their later years. So, race and ethnicity of older adults in Skokie, mostly white, 65% white, quarter Asian, 6% black or African-American, and 4% Hispanic or Latino. Here's a couple more demographics from the Census Bureau about older adults, people 60 and older in Skokie. 40% live alone, 19% are renters. Over half of those renters are spending more than 30% of their income on rent. That's what we call cost burden. So it's, in general, spending about a third of your income on rent, there are half of the older renters in Skokie are spending more than that. 9% of people 60 and older in Skokie are below the federal poverty level, and 9% are receiving SNAP benefits. Age Options, along with our partner organization, serves Skokie. In our last fiscal year, we served over 2,200 people in Skokie with a number of programs, from meals to information assistance caregiver resource center, information and supports, and much more. So what I'll spend the rest of my time talking about is a needs assessment that Age Options did about suburban Cook County, so aging within suburban Cook County, including Skokie. What we had did was in 2023, we published our Aging in the Suburbs Report, featuring results from our UIC study, 500 respondents, 500 survey respondents. It was great data, we wanted to do a deeper dive and have a larger sample size, so in 2024, we partnered with POCO, a company that specializes in surveys and assessments for local governments. And from that, we did a bigger survey. Almost 60,000 surveys were sent out, and what we're reporting on was about 2,000 respondents. We focused on respondents who are 50 or older, again for that planning purposes of that decade coming into aging services. And tonight, that's what I'll be sharing about, is results from that POCO survey, giving some highlights from it. From both these assessments, we identified seven key areas listed here, and I'll go through these quickly, one by one. Visibility of aging services essentially is how easy is it for older adults and caregivers to know about the services in their area and to connect with them when they need them? So how easy is that for residents? And the answer is not really. This is not a surprise for us. In our 51 years, we know that people just don't know about aging services and what's out there. And our survey reflected that. About three-quarters of the respondents to our survey said they had very limited awareness about services available to older adults, and this was a barrier to accessing their services. When we asked, we followed up to that to ask, how do people prefer to get information? So if we're going to inform people of the services out there, how do they prefer to get information? Respondents could select multiple options, but overwhelmingly, printed materials was the number one, with 80% of people saying they preferred printed materials, acknowledging other ways. They like to get information. We also asked where people go. So if we're trying to reach older adults, caregivers, where are people going? And here are the top five answers. Oh, I, I'm so sorry, I apologize. We asked what they participated in, and here are the top five answers. So voting, going to public libraries, attending faith communities, community centers, and community public meetings, like this one, is a place that a lot of the respondents said they went to. For Age Options, this is a reflection back to how we could do outreach into a lot of our partners to, how to reach people over 60 and caregivers as well. So the next part of our study focused on social isolation. This is a graphic from the former Surgeon General of the United States, and what it's saying is, there was studies that have found that lacking social connection is as dangerous as smoking 15 cigarettes a day. The threat that it poses to your health is as dangerous as smoking 15 cigarettes a day. So, in our study, of all respondents, 39% said that they have experienced loneliness or felt isolated in the past year, and that was a problem for them. When we wanted to dive deeper into this, we wanted to see, what does that impact have on other areas? So in our survey, we had a list of 38 different activities or experiences that an older adult might face in within a year, and we had people say if it was a problem for them and to what degree it was a problem or challenge for them. So 38 challenges or scenarios they might face. What we found was, if people reported that they experienced loneliness or felt isolated, everything else, every other challenge was multiplied from there. Does that make sense? So this slide talks about, if I felt lonely or isolated, I was two times as likely to feel stigma about seeking out resources, two times as likely to say, "I have no one to go to for help finding services." I was three times as likely to have trouble getting the healthcare I need. If I was lonely or isolated, I had more trouble getting healthcare I need. And five times as likely to have feelings of depression and having that be a challenge. So talking about social connectedness is really important, of all ages, but particularly for older adults. Ensuring that we have programs and services that connect people and fight back against isolation and loneliness is not only a good feeling thing, it actually does help people tremendously. Okay? The next area I'll focus on quickly is housing. We all live here in Cook County, so we know housing is something on everyone's, on everyone's mind. On this finding, I'm putting up here respondents 60 and older. So of our survey respondents, 60 and older, 37% of respondents are considering moving in the next two to five years. If you recall, I said, in Skokie, your population of people 60 and older is 27% of your total population. So you think about those 27% of people, more than a third may be considering moving in the next two to five years to a different home, a different housing situation. We asked people why they were thinking about moving, and up here are the top three reasons why. Number one, to lower rent or mortgage. Number two, to lower home-related expenses, that's utilities, or home repairs, things of that nature. And finally, number three, because their current home is not accessible or age-friendly. When we say age-friendly, another term people use is universal design, that it's accessible for everyone, no matter your ability, or, no matter your age or ability, your home is accessible, you're able to move about it freely, and complete life, your daily activities that you need to survive. So these are the top three reasons why people are considering moving homes. On the note of aging-friendly homes, one of the most frequently cited challenges people faced were maintaining a home or yard. So over half of our, all of our respondents said that they had trouble maintaining a home or yard, and similarly, they did not know how to access home preservation or home repair type services. So with my time, I'm going to quickly go through the rest of these. With financial and food security, in our survey, if we looked at people under, making household incomes under $25,000, which is roughly that 100% of federal poverty level, we find in our survey that only 17.6% have accessed financial assistance programs. So these are very low-income people, they probably qualify for a lot of financial assistance. In our survey, only 17% said that they access these services. Tying back to Skokie data, this is correlating to the 9% of people 60 and older living below the poverty level in Skokie. For health, over, health, over half of our respondents said they had problems with physical health in the last year. And with transportation, when people reported that they had problems or challenges with transportation, they were three to four times as likely to have other challenges in getting healthcare access, so accessing healthcare. On services might make sense, if it's hard to get to the doctor or to the pharmacy, but we did find, as people said they had transportation issues, they were also reporting other challenges, particularly around healthcare access. Finally, caregiver support. So in our survey, the 2,000 people across suburban Cook County, 50 and older, we found that 40% of survey respondents were caring for someone 50 and older, so someone else 50 and older, okay? And more than half of those were providing four or more hours a week. We wanted to see what the number of hours providing care, where it started showing caregiver burden, and we found that it is four or more hours in our survey was showing that increased levels of both physical burden and emotional burden. So people who are providing care for someone older are feeling it not only physically, but also emotionally. We also found that of the people providing care, four or more hours of care to someone 50 or older, they were, I apologize, other people providing four or more hours of care, 39% were also providing care for someone under 50. We call that the sandwich generation, that you're providing care for someone older than you, and you're also providing care for someone younger than you. So you have a unique set of challenges because you're providing care for more than one generation and more than one, a set of needs. And of the people providing four or more hours of care, almost 60% did not know about caregiver programs, and only 5% have accessed caregiver services. One nice thing is me presenting tonight, I hope 100% of this room will now know, that you could call Age Options for caregiver support services, or North Shore Senior Center is the local agency providing those caregiver resources in your community. A quick note, if you want to know more about caregiver stories, if you're looking to make plans as a community, data matters, but also stories. This is a collection of real caregivers throughout Illinois who are sharing their stories. It's worth checking out, illinoisfamilycaregiver.org, Age Options participated in. My final slide tonight is, ways you can help, is if you are a loved one or needing support, reach out to Age Options, refer someone to Age Options if they live in suburban Cook County. If you live in Skokie or Niles Township, the local agency serving Niles Township is North Shore Senior Center. Their number and website is here. I have a few brochures from North Shore Senior Center that I had printed out, if you're interested in that or need help later tonight. That's the end of my presentation. If there's time for questions, I'll take them. For folks who want to access our needs assessment or other resources, that's what the QR code is for. It just takes you to the website that has those reports in it. So, thank you all so much for letting me come tonight.
Thank you. Other questions? Thank you. Other questions for Mr. Echols from the board? Allison and then Gail.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. This was eye-opening and informative, and you made me feel old, because I'm over 60, so thanks so much.
Oh, that's, we're all aging.
Yeah, thank God. So, excuse my ignorance on this question, but are these resources, are they free? I mean, how does this work? Like, if I did have someone, not me, who needed your, who needed your guidance or Age Options, let me know that.
Thank you so much for asking that. Yes, they are available at no cost, sometimes with a congregate meal program, or maybe sometimes transportation. There's a suggested donation, it is a suggested donation. So, most of these services are available at no cost.
Thank you. So then I'm going to turn to, to our village manager and mayor and say, since we're not pushing out an organization that is cost prohibitive and it's free, is there a way that we can have, drive it like on our website, or is it already there and I'm unaware? Like, how do we get that message out, other than the people sitting in this room?
So this presentation has been shared with the Health and Human Services Department, and so we have staff, specifically social workers, that are working with our population that fit this age criteria, and so we're in constant communication, trying to share these resources, spreading the word, and trying to meet people with what their needs are. So it's in the works.
Thank you.
Thank you for the question.
Trustee Schechter.
Yeah, thank you. It's good to see you. And I should mention that on, I believe it's November 7th, is a Live Well Fair, there's actually a senior fair at, I believe it's at the Oakton Park.
It's at Ogden Park, 4701 Oakton Street. From, where's Mike? 9 to 1? Yeah.
And I also wanted to mention that we just completed doing a whole set of community surveys and a forum, and it was loud and clear that the people of Skokie, among other things, would love to see more senior housing and, and other housing options. So, your data, the data that you provide is really invaluable, and all that you've got also speaks to all of the aspects of, of an age-friendly community, so we're fortunate to have Age Options as a, as a resource.
Oh, we're not that happy. Thank you, Gail, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Jim?
Mr. Echols, I just want to thank you for taking the time to get here and going to all, all the effort for what you do every day. A lot of the, the problems that elderly people in our community face happen to be problems that many of us are facing. But, you know, the loneliness of, of the elderly, coupled with the burden to their caregivers, being, giving them a number that they can call, just to be able to speak to you, I think is a huge service, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And, and thank you so much for having us tonight, to everyone in Skokie and to the board as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Echols. Appreciate it. Okay. We'll move along with our agenda now. Next is the report of our village manager, John Lockerbie.
Thank you, Mayor and trustees, and good evening, everyone. Item A is regarding the affirming Skokie's commitment to inclusion and strengthening Chapter 58 of the Skokie Village Code. The village of Skokie remains steadfast in its commitment to providing safe access to village services and protecting the rights of all who live, work, and visit our community. Skokie is a welcoming community that values compassion, fairness, and respect. The village upholds the Illinois Trust Act and the Voices Act, which prohibit local law enforcement from participating in federal immigration enforcement activities except under- under a valid criminal warrant. Complementing these state protections, the Village's Code, Chapter 58, provides comprehensive local safeguards prohibiting village personnel from assisting in immigration enforcement without a criminal warrant. Staff recommends approval of the proposed amendment to the Human Relations Chapter of the Village Code, that Chapter 58 that we were speaking of. This amendment strengthens and clarifies the prohibitions on the use of village-owned property for civil immigration enforcement. Additional actions that have recently been implemented include the creation of internal protocols to ensure prompt reporting by village staff if federal agents use village property for civil immigration enforcement, distribution of know-your-rights materials, active engagement with affected community members and other stakeholders to understand needs and provide support services, and ending weed enforcement, tall grass for the season. It should also be noted, Skokie Police Supervisors respond to all calls of reported immigration and Customs Enforcement and Customs and Border Protection activity within the Village. As previously communicated, residents are reminded that 911 is a resource if they encounter or observe federal agents working to detain an individual, and the police will respond and work to preserve public safety. I want to acknowledge and thank the team that has worked on these revisions, including Mike Charlie, our Director of Health and Human Services, Barbara Mangler, Corporation Counsel, Jesse Barnes, the Police Chief, and Nick Wyatt, the Assistant Village Manager. I concur with staff's recommendation and respectfully request board approval of the ordinance to amend Chapter 58, Article 1, Section 58 through 8 of the Village Code. The board may do so tonight upon a unanimous vote to suspend the rules and waive the requirement of a second reading.
Thank you, Jim. First, is there a motion to suspend the rules, as John just said, and waive second reading for the ordinance amending Chapter 58, Article 1, Section 58-8 of the Village Code?
I move.
Moved by trustee Lissa Levy, seconded by trustee Allison Pure Slovan. Will any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Robinson?
Aye.
Trustee Iverson?
Aye.
Trustee Lissa Levy?
Aye.
Trustee Pure Slovan?
Aye.
Trustee Schechter?
Aye.
Trustee Kimani Levy?
Aye.
Aye, and the motion passes. Now, is there a motion to approve and adopt the ordinance amending Chapter 58, Article 1, Section 58 point, dash, 8 of the Village Code of the Village of Skokie? Is there a motion? At what point can we? We have to have a, a motion and a, go ahead.
So there is a motion to approve and adopt the ordinance, and then once that is moved and seconded, there will be discussion on that, and we'll go from there.
And we'll go from there. Is that, is, are you moving?
I'm moving to adopt the ordinance.
Thank you. Okay. Is there a second? Trustee Gail Schechter, any discussion? Okay, will the clerk please call the, oh, did you want to, we're, we're going to discuss the ord, oh, I'm sorry.
So we're not going to?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Yep, go ahead. Discussion, go ahead, Gail.
Yes, yes. First, I wanted to just acknowledge that I hear everybody here concerned about the community, concern about our children, concern about anti-Semitism, fear, and the need to see this village take some bold action. So we hear you, we're going to do everything that we can to show that we, that we are here to serve and, and protect and keep everybody safe and, and whole. So I just wanted to mention that. I just was wondering if I could make a, a motion for an amendment to add, actually, I have several, but just to start with, here it says, talks about including use as a staging area or debriefing area, processing location, so the prohibition on, on use of village property. Could we add usage for rest breaks? So using, using village property for, you know, going to the washroom, something like that? Can, can that, can that language be added?
I'm going to defer to our attorney.
So you can make that motion at this time?
Can I make it?
Previous, prior to any other discussion, if that's what you so choose?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we add the phrase after, after processing location, the words rest break area, between processing location and operations base.
I second that motion.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
So there would have to be a, I take it back, we can discuss it right now.
Okay. Trustee Robinson?
I'm wondering, I agree. I'm wondering the subjectivity of rest break. What does that mean? And how explicit do we get?
Yeah, and it's just that we've been hearing a lot in other areas about these ICE officers going into other properties just to use the bathroom.
I get it. So should we say it explicitly clear?
Use the bathroom?
And fill in the, the gap. I just don't want to miss, you know, a break is subjective. So how do we be explicitly clear with the break? Or is the language of not having access?
Would I have to amend my amendment?
I apologize to interrupt. What I would also remind trustees, that this is specifically for village-owned properties, not private or commercial properties.
Right. Correct. So, so would I have to amend my, my motion to, to use the phrase?
You could change your amendment if your second agrees with your change.
I, I just wanted to bring it up for a point of discussion, because I don't want to miss anything for naming something.
And let, let me further complicate, unfortunately, but if the person that the federal employee has with them, needs to use the bathroom, when we get so specific with a code and an ordinance, it doesn't allow the enforcement to use what the code is framing and intending. And so if we get very, very specific, some of these unintended consequences make it more difficult to enforce.
So how can we be sure that the language that we're using is broad enough to keep our community safe and to respond to what we're called to do here today, and also protect the village legally speaking, in terms of, you know, we, we cannot prevent the public from using the bathroom? At what point does an ICE officer go from being a federal agent to a member of the
So again, I would stress, when you emphasize protecting the public, this only relates to village-owned property.
Correct, I understand.
And the village is prohibited in assisting in the immigration enforcement. When, may I say, when you use something like rest breaks, to define what a rest break is, and if somebody is sitting in the parking lot, taking a 20-minute nap, is that part of his rest break, or is he or she doing immigration enforcement? So I would agree with Mr. Lockerbie, I would agree with John, when you get very specific about citing language in the code, you are boxed in, and then the issue becomes enforcement.
I would posit that a person who's on the clock, if they're resting, they're involved in immigration enforcement, if they're, if they're here to enforce immigration and they need to have a rest, they're on the clock, they're here to do that. So I'm, you know, do we allow other people to sleep in our parking lots?
Please. Thank you.
So if somebody is sitting in their car, taking a nap, I don't see the police coming and doing anything about that. They're not doing anything. So they're utilizing the parking lot in some form or fashion.
So we, we do allow the public to sleep in our parking lots?
If they're sitting in their car and they're taking a snooze, I don't understand. I, I'm, I'm, I'm clarifying, I'm, I'm clarifying, because I think that, I think that the, that
the issue, right, is that, is that we have some very specific language that's being requested from the community, and we need to make sure, as we're saying, that the intention of the ordinance that we're passing has the teeth that we want, without basically responding to the needs of the community, and also protecting the village legally. So if I'm understanding you correctly, by keeping the language broad, it enhances our ability to enforce the ordinance. Is that what I'm hearing correctly?
Correct.
So, so what does that mean exactly for this? I, I thought I was hearing the opposite, if we can be more specific.
So the language that is there, that is proposed, has been utilized by other communities, and we have put that in there to strengthen and clarify the ordinance as to what is prohibited and what is not authorized by the village.
Can I read it?
Yeah, go ahead, Keith.
The village's facilities shall include, but not limited, to village-owned buildings, parking lots, garages, vacant lots, or other village-owned property. It's pretty broad. Activities on village-owned facilities, I qualify taking a nap as an activity, that are prohibited shall include assembling, mobilizing, deploying vehicles, equipment, materials, or personnel for the purpose of carrying out civil immigration enforcement
So where, where would taking a, a rest break fit in? Would that be an activity on village-owned facilities that are prohibited? As you just said, it wasn't prohibited, Council.
So what I said was, taking a rest break is ambiguous, and we are not allowing the use of these facilities for civil immigration enforcement. If you deem a rest break as part of civil immigration enforcement, that I think can be argued many ways, is all I'm saying.
Okay. So do we feel like that's strong, what is written is strong enough language to address the specific, the specificity of rest break?
I think the way it is written incorporates clarity and specificity on the prohibitions for use of our village-owned property in civil immigration enforcement.
Okay. It does say other support. Would other support encompass that?
One could make an argument, a very broad argument, one can make an argument many different ways.
If you put gaining access to.
What did you say?
Gain, gaining access to.
Thank you.
Assembling, mobilizing.
Are you saying a change of, a different change of language, or just that interpretation?
I think it's wordsmithing.
Yeah.
Okay.
I was trying to think of something that's more, you know, encompassing of any act.
So if I'm hearing the conversation correctly, on the third line from the bottom of the highlighted section, it would read, shall include, colon, adding the words gaining access, and then leading into assembling, mobilizing, or deploying vehicles.
I like that.
I like gaining access.
Yeah.
Gaining access.
Okay.
Can I amend my motion?
You can amend your motion if your second is, if you second concur.
I concur.
Okay.
Okay.
So the new amendment to the, the motion to amend is specifically adding the words gaining access on the, the third line of the second paragraph?
Yes.
After the colon.
Good. Now, I just had another question. Would we vote on that amendment first before getting to another amendment related to signage?
So you, we would vote on this amendment first before we vote on the original motion to amend the ordinance?
Okay.
Does that make sense?
And, and if there's multiple amendments, do each amendment individually?
Correct.
Okay.
So we're going to vote on both?
So right now, we're going to vote, I believe, on?
On Gail's suggestion, Gail's first, Lissa's second, to amend it according to the language that was just developed. Okay. Any other discussion?
Can we read that for the record?
So as I understand it, the amendment on the floor, that was altered with the concurrence of the second, is to add the words gaining access in the third line of the second paragraph of subsection A, after the words shall include, colon, and we add the words gaining access.
It will read gaining access to assembling, mobilizing, or deploying vehicles, equipment, materials, or personnel for the purpose of carrying out civil immigration enforcement operations.
Yes.
Okay.
Call for the vote.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Robinson?
Aye.
Trustee Iverson?
Aye.
Trustee Lissa Levy?
Aye.
Trustee Pure Slovan?
Aye.
Trustee Schechter?
Aye.
Trustee Kimani Levy?
Aye.
And the motion passes.
So we are set to revisit the original motion to amend the ordinance as amended, if there are no other amendments.
So we amended it, now we have to accept it as amended?
Right. And then add the other amendment, right?
Can I add an, can I make another motion for another amendment?
Yes.
Sure. Okay. So another amendment with regard to, to signage, the, the language would be, this would be part of A.
So if I may, trustee?
Yes.
Signage is under the purview and the authority of the village manager. That doesn't need to be in the code.
That won't, we can discuss it and provide direction to the manager, Gail, but that won't be codified.
So what about the language that's on the sign?
That's going to be up to the attorneys.
That would, again, signage on village property restricting access is under the purview of the village manager.
Okay. So, so is it clear then that this, these, this prohibited, prohibited activities, all of A, and the prohibited use of village property, that it's going to be made clear somehow? That, that, there's going to be signage, I mean, that there's an assumption of?
So that's a discussion with the village manager at this point, with regard to the signage.
I, I do have to note that we have over 30 parking lots, municipal-owned parking lots, and so.
Now, how about another, another question before making a motion about private property signage? Because what we're hearing from a lot of people, and so really poignant testimony from somebody who had ICE just came in without a warrant, and which, which actually gets me to another question, I don't know where to put it, like what happened that the police said, there's nothing we can do. But in any event, ICE just sort of went right into their house. Is there, can we add some language, which is also in some of these other ordinances, to say that the village manager's office shall design and print standardized signage that private landlord owners, et cetera, could, could download, could use? With, with disclaimer language saying that the village is not providing legal advice?
Right. So that is a question, and we actually, I did talk to outside counsel with regard to this. And the fear is, they, they cautioned against that, and I agree. And the reason for that? I'm sorry, it's very hard to hear. I'm sorry. They cautioned against that, and I agree with that. I believe that the homeowners or the private property owners may assume some type of false sense of security with regard to the village coming in and, again, impeding ICE agents coming in. There are Fourth Amendment protections, but there are exceptions to Fourth Amendment protections, and a blanket statement saying you cannot come in may not always apply. protections, and a blanket statement saying you cannot come in may not always apply. So I would not want to give residents and homeowners and property owners a false sense of security.
Trustee Pierce Lowen?
I understand what you're saying, so I'm just thinking. So once the village decides on the language that we're going to utilize on our, the properties of the village, would it, there be a reason that a private property owner couldn't look at that language and choose to have something similar on their property?
A private property owner may put whatever signage they wish in their property. The village has not control.
So they looked at it and said, "That's perfect language, and I want to duplicate it, replicate it, however you want to look at it, and put it on my property," then there is no ordinance that would stop them from that, correct? We could be the guide, so to speak, and then property owners can utilize it if they would like.
We do have a sign ordinance, but that's usually, and I have to go back and look at it, but that does not regulate content.
What is the legal issue preventing that, those signs from just being made available through download? Like, if the village is putting these signs on...
I think they're available many places through download.
But if the village, if the village has signage for our property, is there a reason why we couldn't have the same graphics so that it is, so that it is consistent throughout the village, for public and private?
The signage that I'm sure we're going to discuss in a few minutes is based on our ordinance, citing the prohibitions of what can and cannot be done with regard to civilized enforcement on our village-owned properties.
And therefore, it doesn't apply to private property.
Does not extend to private property.
But I think what is helpful would be, after the conversation tonight, the robust discussion, all of the excellent public comment, that we review the education material that the village has been providing for weeks, and for us to strengthen that. And so I think this conversation can help inform that information and be sure, because one of the messages that we have been communicating is that warrant is important. And so if that message isn't being clear or isn't being received yet, we need to review our material and go back and revisit that.
Well, I'd be mostly interested in the verbiage of the sign. So, you know, I would ask, you know, staff to bring that explicit language to the board.
For the village sign, the sign that we're going to use for our own property?
Yes.
I also think the reason, I think it was trustee Lissa Levy, you mentioned about uniformity of the look of the sign and the importance of that. I mean, we had, there's a real importance of logo and branding, you know? We had Skokie welcomes everyone, welcomes everyone except ICE. So imagine that we have that logo. There's just something very powerful and unifying, you know? We talked about, somebody talked about the importance of, you know, we're talking about two issues, you know, children and community. We're also talking about older people. But when we're talking about these unifying examples, some kind of, in addition to language, I think, I think some kind of slogan or logo just has a huge symbolic importance. It sends a message that the, the community is unified, and anyone trying to come in from the outside to sort of break, break our bonds is going to have a, they're going to be challenged. Trustee Pierce Lowen?
But, but if the village, and that's suggesting I don't like the idea, I'm still just working through it, if the village created a logo or something, would then others be allowed to utilize it? Is there, is that a problem?
So right now, the village logo is, is in the purview of the village, so...
And the, and the Skokie welcomes everyone campaign wasn't just a village initiative. There was a number of entities within the community that came together, created that, that slogan, that theme, and then developed the signs, and then they were pushed out. And so it wasn't just one entity doing it, it was truly a community kind of initiative, and, and that may be very appropriate for this.
Lissa, then, Allison, Lissa.
So one of the things I think is really important for us as a board to be aware of, and for the community also to hear the board say, is that we are operating under a goodwill deficit at the moment, and unfortunately, that means that we need to be working even harder to be forthright and proactive in our communication. Not everybody comes to board meetings, not everybody reads ordinances, not everybody visits the website. And so even though we have this information available, we need to find other ways that we are communicating with the community about what we're doing, and almost ad nauseam, because this is, we're reaching a fever pitch in our community where people are really freaked out, people are really freaked out. I see you out there. Also, community members, you have a responsibility to know that, and to communicate to the people in your immediate circles, that we are working really hard to help you. So, you know, we certainly need more outward communication, but we also, you know, we also, we also need to know that you have our backs too. So, so on this communication piece, can we speak a little bit about how we can maybe brainstorm some ways to get these messages out in other avenues that we aren't already exploring?
Our communications team can certainly do that. You know, we have connections through the faith leaders, through the schools, ELL Parents Center, Early Childhood Alliance, Niles Township, the Food Pantry, there's a Food Pantry on Oakton Street. We have a lot of different avenues where we can get out information.
Great.
Before I go to trustee Pierce Lowen, I just want to say, I participated in a ninety-minute call this afternoon with about a hundred mayors from around the region. So we're not alone. Everyone is going through this, everyone. Former Chicago mayor Lori Lightfoot, who was on the call, she is, I believe, co-chair of the new, newly-formed Illinois Office of Accountability, and this, what, her words were something like, "This isn't just strong enforcement, this isn't just aggressive enforcement by ICE, it's hostile enforcement." And that's what we're seeing and our neighboring communities are seeing. This is new for everybody, the police departments. We had police chiefs with decades and decades of experience on this call, saying that they are working hard to figure out how they're dealing with it. So we will be working on a regional level as well to see what best practices are. We'll be leaning into our partners, the Illinois Office of Accountability, and our regional groups, because that's the way we're going to get through this, is together, not just within our community, but relying on our regional partners. Trustee Pierce Lowen?
Thank you again, mayor. So this is one of those times, trustee Robinson, I might not agree with you, and that is, you would like to see it brought back to the board in two weeks, and actually, I would like to know what would be a timeline that we can see signs, or, and I know we have a lot of parking lots in a lot of public areas, but from the timeline of how quickly the, the offices can ask to get the signage out there, because if we could do it sooner than two weeks, I think we should. I think we need to act quickly.
I agree. Well, we will hope to finalize the verbiage within two days, and then we'll start to manufacture the signs and then get them deployed, hopefully starting that by the end of the week.
We are fortunate in that our Public Works Department, like many, we have our own sign shop, so we'll be able to get to that in short order. Yes, trustee Schechter? I just have another question about physical barriers, and I realize it's very difficult, for example, right here with the library, I mean, with, you know, this parking lot here, but again, in, in Chicago and other, other areas that have these kinds of ordinances, they, they, there's language here, I'll just read what I have. Where available and appropriate, village departments and agencies may utilize physical barriers such as locked gates to limit access to village-owned and controlled parking lots, vacant lots, garages, or other property consistent with this resolution, and in conjunction with proper signage.
It's a very, although there's so much appeal to that, it's a very problematic logistical problem to implement. I spoke with another community that only had one municipal parking lot. We have over thirty, they had one. So they did barriers, they had security staffing to allow in the appropriate people and not to allow in the others. It's a very challenging situation for us to do, and so I think we need to start with the signage and work from there, and then we will monitor it, and I, I will be able to work administratively to try to, you know, strengthen what we need to put in place, but I, I don't think it's logistically possible to put barriers and gates and staff security, you know, during hours of operation.
I would also say, as you read in that resolution, that does not mandate barricades or barriers on every property.
And John...
It's very broad and ambiguous.
And John can do that at his own discretion. I mean, think back to summer of 2020, when, you know, there was a lot of rioting and looting, and we understand why, it was in the wake of the George Floyd murder, but in order to preserve Old Orchard, we brought our garbage trucks out, and we parked garbage trucks around the perimeter of Old Orchard to protect that valuable capital asset in the village. So if we start to have a problem, and here's the other thing, we'll have, we have the ordinance, we'll have the signage that the village manager has said, you know, we can, thank goodness, we can produce it in-house and we can get it up quickly. What we then would need would be evidence. If there is a breach, we would need evidence, and this is what would go to, we would seek legal counsel, it would go to not only the Illinois Office of Accountability, but we could seek relief through a court. That seems to be where this is going, right? So that's what we would, that's what we would do. So it's certainly, if there is a problem, if it's violated, we would need proof, and then we would, we would work with our legal counsel, and again, with our partners to, and that's what the Illinois Office of Accountability, that's what we were told today, that what they are seeking to do, and they're working hard, they've been in existence two weeks, but they are encouraging people, they want to document what is going on in Illinois. And, you know, let's hope we don't have to do that in Skokie, but if we do, we'll do it. Trustee Kamani Levy?
Thank you, Mayor Tennis. So that brings me back to something that you mentioned about, I think someone made a comment about the police department. Do we have some sort of enforcement mechanism in place similar to the documentation and reporting, and how are we compiling that information to maintain it so that we can say whether or not this is working, or...
So the police department does have in place protocol that in these situations, when people call 911, that preferably a supervisor will go out to draw on their experience and their expertise, and then they are, as the situation develops, you know, they're able to develop a report and file that accordingly. And so, I don't know if the police chief, yeah, if the police chief, if you have anything you want to add?
I think you covered it, but... So we are, we are trying to send supervisors out when people call us and they're concerned about the legitimacy of law enforcement operations, and, and based on what we're faced with, we're going to have to make decisions on an individual basis. It's not something that we can have just a blanket approach or anything to, because it's, it's going to be very nuanced based on what we're experiencing.
I want to commend our police chief and the entire Skokie Police Force. Thank you. Certainly, you know, the village manager, Ms. Eddie, I know, forgive me if I'm not, Edie, I know you called my office today, or I got a message that came through the village manager's office, someone will follow up with you. It will either be the village manager, or chief, or someone in, in the village...
I want to know if I have called the police, and if ICE has...
I know you do, I know, and we will, we will get that answer. But I want to say that one of the other things that was expressed over and over on this call today was what a challenge this is for our local law enforcement. This is uncharted territory for them to, they didn't train for this. I mean, I don't want to diminish the excellent training and commitment to training that our police department has and that this village has funded over the years, and that will continue, but this is very different, and it is a challenge for law enforcement in our area. So again, as was talked about before, we need to be grateful to our, our police department. Trustee Robinson?
Thank you, mayor. Couple things.
Yep.
I want to make sure that the sign is, though, I know we're going to hear, "That's not good enough, or shouldn't read like that." So I just want to caution, we move too fast, a lot of people are going to be upset, or could be upset, but I appreciate trying to get that expedited. The other thing I want to say is, I think I'm hearing, if ICE is seen in the village to call 911. Is that what I'm hearing?
So the, if individuals feel at risk, or somebody else observes them, and a police officer could be of assistance, and be an advocate, and be somebody to help in that situation, then they should call the police. There has been a lot of reports of people perceiving that a vehicle or individuals were federal agents, and they were not. They, you know, you know, there's assumptions now of, you know, a certain vehicle is definitely a federal agent, and that's just not the case. And so the, the situation where the police can be helpful is, is an advocate and a person in interactions with the federal agent. It's, it, as much as it pains me to say this, a police officer cannot prevent the federal agent from doing their job. If there is a, if there is a certain warrant that is present, then, then the person, and so the feder, unfortunately, our police cannot stop certain transactions from happening, but they can be an advocate and an ally for our residents, or the person visiting, or the employee in town, and so we want to provide that resource, so we make sure that everything that we know, and we're trying to communicate to the community, is present in the moment when we can do the, the most good for our resident.
But also, it sounds like, I think I heard the chief say, "They'll confirm."
That's right.
Right?
Right.
So, so that's just a point of record. So if there's a call, they could confirm, but as far as the assistance, I get that piece. But to go on record with there's, there's an allegation and there's confirmation.
You're saying if, as a, if a resident thinks that the federal agent is in town, then the police would be able to verify that or not? We don't have a database, we don't get contacted by the federal government when they're coming into town, and so we do not have authoritative information to be able to say, yes, a federal agent is here, or no, they're not here, and so we're not...
I heard the chief say that they would send a supervisor to confirm.
Keith, we're going to get the chief up. Let him.
So what we want to reduce is we want, we want to make sure that we can de-escalate any situation that we can. We do not want a confrontation between citizens and a federal agent to escalate and get worse. So in those situations where people are unsure about the legitimacy of an operation, we can act as a liaison in those situations if somebody feels comfortable, or feels they'll be more comfortable talking to us than trying to confront whatever they're dealing with in that situation. That being said, that does not mean that we are going to get compliance, or confirmation, or cooperation from any of the other agencies that you all are referring to. So we can't promise anything in that regard, but we definitely want to do our part to make sure that our citizens feel safe, and that we can de-escalate situations and potentially reduce the likelihood of something escalating to a use-of-force situation between a federal agent and one of our citizens.
Good.
Residents?
Thank you. I'm just asking a question, guys.
Trustee Pierce Lowen?
I'm not done.
Oh, go ahead. Keith's not done?
Nope.
Go ahead. And then we'll go to Allison, and then Gail.
Last but not least, I want the community to continue to hold us responsible for the work that we're doing. We're not the only government agency here locally. We've got school districts, park districts, and Niles Township as well. Hold us accountable.
Again, I agree with that, but being clear that they are separate units of government.
I know that.
No, I know you know that. I know you know that. I know you do. But just, they are separate units of government, so if there are concerns with other entities, they have elected boards, that's where those, those questions and concerns need to go. Trustee Pierce Lowen?
I want to make a statement...
I want to make a statement about false accusations. We're all on edge. I'm just as on edge as everybody else. But I would tell you that I could give you an instance where there was a false accusation and misinformation, and we have to be careful about that as well. And it was placed on Facebook and it put something else in jeopardy, and I'll explain it exactly. Synagogues unfortunately today, as you all know, probably are under a lot of security to go to a synagogue to be safe. Unfortunately, our synagogue on Dempster was accused on Facebook of harboring ICE agents on synagogue property. Those were our security guards. But that put a target on the back of the synagogue because people then would be angry at the Jewish community for what they thought was harboring. So we have to be really careful about that as well, about misinformation and accusations. And if you're not sure, first of all, don't ever put anything like that on social media. But also that is a good example of calling the police, checking out whether or not there really was an ICE agent. But now we, many synagogues are very nervous about their security guards who are protecting the Jews to go to the synagogue because people are thinking that we're harboring ICE. So we have to be really careful with our lanes and accusations. That's all I'm asking. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Schechter.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we didn't, that we resolve the issue of signage in private, private property. And whether, you know, if it... Obviously, there are issues of enforceability, but I still think that there is some symbolic value of unified signs that everybody can have. Is that something, what would be the best way to proceed on that?
Communities have to do that. As I have said, communities have to do that, but we can't.
Are you talking about for our parking lots or...?
No, no, for, for people to be able to download from our, our website. And I'm not talking about, and I, I think you thought I meant the, I don't mean the Village of Skokie's logo, but, but some kind of a brand that like Chicago has, I forget what the name of it is.
Hands Off Chicago.
Hands Off Chicago. Hands Off Skokie. If we had some, something like that, that people could just put on, you know, have it all in our windows.
From the legal perspective, it's advising that the best practice for that is for that to be outside of the village government leading that charge. And so perhaps the "Skokie welcomes everyone" campaign is a model where a number of groups came together, created the logo, and then moved forward with a sign. Maybe that would be a way for our community to come together and to demonstrate solidarity and provide that through several different groups coming together.
I, I'm sorry, I had one, one other question, which is about our schools. And I know that there are these wonderful efforts of volunteers, people here who are doing these safe passage, you know, accompanying children to and from school. And some people say, "That's the way to go." I just was wondering whether any, any local schools have asked for additional police when children come or leave? It's just a question and whether, whether we're being asked for police protection.
We have not received any requests for additional police protection.
Gail, I called a superintendent on Friday afternoon. I had just left a school in the north end of Skokie, and I was thinking about another district. I was going south. And I, I called this other superintendent, kind of in the middle of Skokie, and asked them, "Do you need us?" You know, "Do you, do you need me there?" "Do you, what do you need?" Nothing. They had volunteers outside. I'm not, no, I want to restate that. They had staff outside. And the staff was keeping an eye. They were doing that intentionally because they wanted to keep things as normal as possible for the children. Again, every school district is going to approach this differently. So folks in the community, if you have children in the schools or you live near the schools and you're concerned, we're all concerned, go to that school board, tell them what, what you, what you think needs to be done. It's for those school boards to grapple with. But you mentioned the volunteers who are walking children to school. And I, I believe one of the districts does, is starting, again, a grassroots effort where parents, I've heard they're going to be wearing pink vests, are going to be outside of school, of the school buildings. If one of those parents sees something, they can certainly call the police. So the, you know, the police would, would respond as always. So I think, you know, we're available, we're checking in with our partners, and they will call us when needed. So, and then there's that wonderful grassroots effort as well. So it's a, it's a real partnership. Okay. Yes, go ahead, trustee. Yeah, you've been awful quiet over there.
I, I, I'm only speaking if I have something to add.
No, I, I know.
So, practical question. And, and this will, might involve Chief Barnes. So I might, for example, my neighbor Bob, ICE appears very quickly, they grab him. I've already called 911, the police are on their way. Maybe they get there in time and maybe they're able to communicate with ICE and maybe they're not. But I've, I've got Bob's name and I've written down, I got his number, and his sister's in Morton Grove, I got her number. So I'm definitely going to give that to the police. My big concern is the word disappeared. That that is in our vocabulary is horrifying. And so information and documentation seems super important to me. So the information that I capture, I give it to the police for sure, correct?
Chief.
I don't like hypotheticals because of the facts of the individual situation are going to matter. But to your point, obviously, information you have is going to be helpful in a lot of circumstances, right? But it's also a situation where what we're experiencing is, based on last week, the two days last week, we're not there when these federal agencies are on scene. And a lot of times, we don't have access to some database that provides us with information. So I, I don't want there to be a false sense that we have resources that are going to help us to locate someone because we don't. And, and that information is not, it's, it's not flowing in either direction. So as far as alerting family members, if you have that information and you have a relationship, we're not going to tell you that you can't do that as well either. Certainly, we'll document what we can. But in a lot of these situations, I just, I don't want there to be some false sense that we have the ability to do certain things that we don't.
There is an organization that is doing this thing. And you can call that number and they will look at... No, that's important.
No, I, Kim, I know, can, Ms. Parker, I know they will...
That is important.
What, what, Kim, please?
So people who are listening should know the number to call.
Kim, what I was going to say, what I was about to say is that before we vote, there will be time for five speakers. I am, I've been mindful of the individual there with the sign up. And I was going to ask if she or someone with her wanted to be first in line to give that information on record. So it has not gone unnoticed, and she will have an opportunity to speak. It is important information. Thank you. Chief?
I said everything I can say. Thank you.
While you're there. Anything else for the chief?
I don't mind coming back.
I know. I know. We'll have, well, I don't... We'll, we'll, I have time. Okay, yes. He will stick around after. Thank you. Okay. So what we need to do now...
You want to allow that?
Yeah. So we're going to, as, as is our process, before we have an action item, we do allow for up to five speakers. So leave the sign. If you want to come over here or someone in your group, it's not you, someone, give that information. Please do. We would ask, folks, we would ask that people who have spoken before yield and that people who have not spoken, because this time we will only allow five speakers. Okay, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Marcy Shakina Lou. I'm holding a sign here. Microphone. Oh, hi.
Yeah, thank you, yeah, microphone.
I'm sorry. Hi, my name is Marcy Shakina Lou. I'm a Skokie resident. There's a sign here with a phone number on it. Everyone should put this number in your phone. This is the Family Support Network hotline for the Illinois Coalition for Immigrant and Refugee Rights. They are the organization in Illinois that is the clearinghouse for support for our immigrant neighbors and their loved ones when there's ICE activity in our community. So please, you see ICE, you call this number. You know somebody who needs help, you call this number. Please, put it in your phone and use it. Send it to everybody that you know in the area. It's super important. Number two, okay, I'm on the clock. I, I wanted to address briefly some comments that the Corporation Council made about the Fourth Amendment implications. I spoke here on the last, the last board meeting about how I'm a criminal defense attorney, I've done civil rights litigation, and the Fourth Amendment is my wheelhouse, right? I know pretty much everything there is to know about the Fourth Amendment, okay? And I'm concerned that there's an idea that Skokie residents might be getting the wrong idea if we put, you know, "ICE Not Welcome" in Skokie, that we're going to assume that that means that, if that, that, that means that somehow we're going to be getting, you know, police privileges by putting those signs up in, in our windows. And I don't think that that's true. And I think even if it was true and there was some misunderstanding, that that could be corrected with some public service announcements. These signs, you put them up at your own risk, you know, this is not, does not mean that, you know, you have a direct line to the police, nothing. It's just simply saying, "ICE, stay out of our community." It's no different than the type of signs that say, "No solicitation." Because what it means in terms of the Fourth Amendment is your home is your sacred spot, your area around your home is the curtilage. You have an expectation of privacy in your home. You have a lesser expectation of privacy in the curtilage around your home, your garage, your yard, et cetera, because you hold that space open to the public, delivery drivers, trick-or-treaters, et cetera. But you have the right to limit who comes into those areas. And the, the, the need for the signs is because you have to give people notice of your intention to exclude them. That's where the "No Solicitation" signs come in. That means I'm not giving you permission to come on my property for the purposes of solicitation. The signs for keeping ICE out of our houses is the same thing. We're putting ICE on notice that you don't have permission to come to my property for the purposes of civil immigration enforcement. So I want to make that clear from the Fourth Amendment perspective. So, thanks.
Thank you. Before we go to, before we go to our next speaker, I would just like to note that that number has been on. Appreciate it here, appreciate the sign. That was big and, big and important, certainly. But that has been on the homepage of the village website since July. It's been to the top of our, our Facebook page, and we have been pushing out information. And we'll continue to do it. And again, as we said before, we'll, you know, we double our efforts to work with our community partners to get that information out. Our next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Eric McCarthy, and I am a resident of Skokie. And I did want to share that I do appreciate the information on the Skokie website, the village website. However, just like we have plasterings of signage when it's election time, these signs should be everywhere, everywhere. They should be available to residents of Skokie, in the village, in the library, the little cards. It should be where if residents of Skokie wanted to know your rights informational session, where is that? Is the, like, the village can host it, the library can host it. It should be in different languages, right? I work in a school, I work with children. Children are terrified. Parents are terrified of sending their children to school. We have students who are not coming to school and missing out on education, students with IEPs who need those vital individualized education services, and they're not coming. Why? Because ICE has decided to disrupt everyone's lives. As far as like the signage, Skokie does welcome everyone, except ICE. There's an easy sign right there for you. Right there. Super easy. Super easy. I appreciate the, the stuff on the website, but we need to do more. Our village deserves more. This community deserves more. Our children, our neighbors deserve more. So, that's all I got.
Thank you. Mr. Coplo, I think you're next.
Hi, Michael Coplo, resident of Skokie, registered voter. I was going to say something eloquent about how horrible this all is, but that would be redundant because I can't match the people who spoke earlier. I'm, first of all, I'm curious, does, does village-owned property that, that ICE would be prohibited from using, does that include streets that are under village jurisdiction?
We're going to stop the clock, and our Corporation Council is going to...
That is a public right of way.
I'm sorry?
That's a public right of way.
Okay, so that's a non-starter.
Let's try them.
The other thing is, I assume that all of us are against hate crimes. If you're not against hate crimes, you're probably not going to admit it. We're all against hate crimes. And I'm wondering if an amendment could be added to say, these unidentified, with their masks, they're Klansmen in camo. They, they commit hate crimes. I mean, they commit crimes against people based on their real or perceived background. And I'm wondering if something could be added to the ordinance saying that, that these crimes that they commit are classified as hate crimes. And if that wouldn't work in the ordinance, I think it could still be a resolution. I mean, you know, the, the council isn't averse to making resolutions that don't have any teeth, but showing where they stand. And I think that would be a good idea.
Thank you, Mr. Coplo. Who's grabbed, Nikki?
Earlier, it was said that, something about ICE having warrants. But the thing is, most of the people who have been grabbed, they don't have warrants for these people. They just see a brown person working with a lawnmower and shove them in an SUV. So let's say, that's kidnapping. If I call 911 and I say, "Hey, my neighbor's landscapers are being kidnapped," then what happens? I'm asking that question, maybe the chief will come back. And there's a follow-up question to that, which is, let's say that ICE tries to come and use the bathroom in Village Hall. What happens in that scenario?
So again, as was said before, we would need proof, which we would get. And then we would, we would have to seek relief through the courts.
You can't just arrest them?
We, we don't have jurisdiction, I believe. I'm going to defer to our council.
So again, we are very limited in what we can do. We cannot impede enforcement, and we can...
So... So, so the way I understand it is that when the landscaper is disappeared, that ICE is the one to call. Right? And in terms of, so that's, that's the first question. You know, other people have called the office of our Congresswoman, and they have called some other elected officials. So, you know, in the state, at the state level, so that's another option. But in terms of your answer about if, again, we have this ordinance on the books, we will have signs up. Corporation Council, if it's violated, what's our recourse?
So if there's a violation of the ordinance, or likely the not, that we will seek some kind of declaratory action or... some kind of declaratory action or temporary restraining order.
That's what's happening, that's what you're hearing about, these court actions. In fact, that, again, that was talked about on my call, on the call I was on today, with all these other mayors and the other attorneys and experts.
Okay, but going back to the kidn-
So, we're going to keep goi- I'm sorry, we're, we're not going to have a free-flowing, this is going to be, we're going to keep going.
So, going back to the kidnapping question, that's the same thing, you'll secretly through the courts?
No, no, that's, that's through ICER. The families do that through ICER.
Oh, ICER, yes, okay, yes, you did say that. Um, I just also want to tell you sort of a cautionary tale of not being super explicit. Congress makes these laws, and they say, "Oh, we want EPA to do X," but they're not real clear about what X means, and so then EPA tries to interpret that, and if somebody challenges it in the courts and says, "Ah, we don't like your interpretation," doesn't always hold. So my concern is, um, going back to what the Village Council was saying about having, like, a wide net, like, I'm, well, I'm worried that maybe ICE's lawyers will say, "Well, Westbreak meant this," but you have no standing, or-
There's a lot of conjecture right now, lot of conjecture, lot of confusion. We're all learning, this is, this is new.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We have time for one more speaker, is there one more person who would like to address the board at this point? Ms. Yamouche?
Okay, Emma Yamouche, I'm a resident of Skokie. I think we're all agreeing tonight that the Village Board represents all the residents of Skokie. The Skokie Police Department defends, protects, and serves all of the residents of Skokie. And for that reason, that's why I think a lot of people have been up here asking for a tangible, visible sign of that, and literally a sign to put on private property. Our condominium building made its own signs. We made 20 of them in less than 24 hours, and it just clearly says, "This property is owned and controlled by the Metropolitan of Skokie Condominium Association. No trespassing for the purposes of civil immigration, law enforcement, ICE and CBP have no permission to enter these premises without a criminal warrant signed by a judge." This condominium believes that all of its residents and bona fide visitors should enter in a spirit of safety and dignity. That's all it took, and we printed up 20 signs in less than 24 hours. What people are asking for are signs with the Village's approval, imprimatur, so that these are recognizable as a symbol of unity, of solidarity, whatever you want to call it. We're not so stupid that we think, and I'm certainly not, the owners in my condominium building, they don't think we condo board members are going to be out there fighting ICE off. But it's the fact that we are there to support them, give them cover, have their backs, provide documentation and proof that we stood for something. And that's what people want the Village Board to do, it's what we want the police to do. We want the police to come out with their body cams and document and ask questions and make sure these really are ICE agents who are abducting people left and right. They need names, badge numbers, and agency identification. In my ideal scenario, if a huge crowd, huge, 40, 50 neighbors gathers around an incident, the police get there, the police say to the neighbors, "We've got this, we will stand in front of you. You can yell and scream and give everyone the finger, whatever, just don't throw anything, and let the police be the barrier facing outward toward ICE." Not toward the crowd holding them back, but outward toward ICE to protect the citizens and the residents of Skokie. And then let ICE make the move and throw the tear gas canister, and let ICE be the one that assaults. I'm not looking for the confrontation, but this, in my ideal scenario, is how the Skokie Police Department would react. Thank you.
We are a strong community, aren't we? Um, we're going to close, uh, public comment for this, this time. Um, and I was going to call for the vote, but Gail, you've got something else you want to say?
Just with the, these last comments reinforcing the need for, again, signage, I know Village Manager Lockerbie talked about private entities doing this, could we at least ask our marketing department, or, you know, to, to start to take some initiative at a, at a design and language? I'm not saying that this is part of the ordinance, but, but some-
We need to reconcile the outside legal opinion, and so let us, let us, let us take the conversation, the trustees' desire, um, the board's desire, and let us, let us see if we can reconcile all of these things, and maybe have some conversations with a few of our partners as well. Um, and, and so, let us do a little more thinking and, and work on this issue.
Thank you. Before we, we call the question, and Barb's going to remind us what the question is. Oh, Jim, go ahead, yep, and then I'm going to have the last word, and then we're going to vote.
In that, in that sign that we're talking about, legal is one thing, but perhaps it is a spiritual issue, uh, in that, you know, I just think the community is demonstrating the, the love they have for their neighbors, and signage would be a visible illustration of that love, so that people walking down the street see it, and I think that could be effective spiritually.
So, I'd like to just thank everyone for coming out tonight, for your passion, and most importantly, for your, your care and concern for our community and your neighbors. It's, it's really a wonder to see. Reflecting on some of the comments just now, there were quite a few know-your-rights sessions, you know, right after the first abduction in Skokie in July, and they continued on. And our community partners did those. So, maybe it's time that we get back in touch with our community partners, and it's, it's time for a refresh, sadly, because of how, you know, the hostile actions that, that are taking place, as they were characterized by former Mayor Lori Lightfoot. Um, I'd also like to say, just one last thing, more generally, that I think is so important for all of us to keep in mind now, is, you know, we've had great discussions tonight, and, you know, we're going to work with our partners in the Village, we're going to do our part, but there is such fear and such uncertainty now, and so many of our neighbors are really vulnerable. So we need to look at, how else can we support our neighbors? Skokie Valley Rotary Club just finished a coat drive, okay? There are going to be people who don't have money to buy winter coats. We know what's going on with SNAP benefits, and, boy, there was an impressive showing in Evanston yesterday. Um, our food pantry, there are folks in our community who want to mobilize and do something similar, give to the food pantries. No, my personal thing I do, I don't give food, I give a check, because they can buy the food a lot cheaper than I can buy it. That money will stretch a lot further. Um, you know, make donations where you can. Are there legal funds? Um, those are the things that we need to do to additionally, to pull together as a community and support our neighbors in this horrifically difficult time that none of us ever imagined would happen. So with all of that said, thank you to my colleagues, thank you to staff, our chief, everyone who's here. Um, we are going to vote on the amended motion.
Motion to approve-
Motion to approve, and it, who's going to, someone's going to make this, who, someone's going to make this-
To approve-
A motion, go ahead.
So, there's an original motion on the floor. Whoever moved and seconded the-
Trustee Lissa Levy.
Okay. And that has been amended to include the language "gaining access to," as we've discussed before, after the colon in the second paragraph. So the motion on the floor at this point is, uh, motion to approve and adopt the ordinance amending Chapter 58, hold on.
Eight, eight dash eight.
As amended.
And just to reiterate, because our first vote was to waive second read, it, it is codified after tonight. I'll sign it as soon as they give me the, the paper tomorrow.
Correct, so it will be adopted tonight.
Okay, so, will the clerk, are we clear, we don't need anything rephrased, everybody's clear? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Robinson?
Aye.
Trustee Iverson?
Aye.
Trustee Lissa Levy?
Aye.
Trustee Pure Slogan?
Aye.
Trustee Schecter?
Aye.
Trustee Kamani Levy?
Aye.
I am proud of this board. I know it's late, but we are going to take a five-minute recess, and then we'll start up again. Okay? Trustee Iverson? Sorry. Okay, uh, we're going to pick up with the rest of the manager's report, but I think I know what you're going to say.
Items B and C were already approved, and that completes my report.
Thank you, John. The next item on the agenda is a report of our Corporation Council by Barbara Mangler.
Thank you, Mayor. Item A was previously adopted with the passage of tonight's consent agenda. Item B is an ordinance that's up for second reading. This is an ordinance that will amend Chapter 2, Article 7 of the Skokie Code by increasing the number of members on the Appearance Commission from seven to nine. Additionally, the Telecommunications Advisory Committee will be renamed to the, let me get this, Technology Advancement and Transformation Commission. The number of members will also increase from 10 to 13. The name change to Technology Advancement and Transformation Commission is to acknowledge that advances in technology and are transformative, and this is up for second reading tonight. First reading was up on October 21st. A motion to approve and adopt is in order.
Motion to approve. Trustee Lissa Levy, thank you. Is there a second? Trustee Kamani Levy, the Levis have it. Uh, will there, any, any discussion? I, before, I do have something I'd like to say, I'd like to thank all of you. This is the first of what will likely be a few different ordinances to amend the way our boards and commissions are set up. We've talked about some of the other ones that are coming, um, but this will enable, this does a few things. It enables more people to serve, it, it creates consistency between the number of seats on all three of our land use commissions, and it allowed a commission to, um, change the name in a way that reflects how their work has evolved with technology. So I think I appreciate all of your, your, um, your understanding and your, your support of this. So, uh, anything else? If not, will the clerk please call?
Sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, trustee, I didn't see it, I'm sorry, Jim.
Just, I, I wanted a really quick shout-out for the, uh, Stat Commission, uh, because they are, um, the talent represented by the group, the expertise is enormous, and that they are able to expand and even bring in more talent, it's a giant asset to our, to our community.
Yes, thank you. All right, will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Robinson?
Aye.
Trustee Iverson?
Aye.
Trustee Lissa Levy?
Aye.
Trustee Pure Slogan?
Aye.
Trustee Schecter?
Aye.
Trustee Kamani Levy?
Aye.
And the motion passes.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Barb. The next item on the agenda is Plan Commission Pay, uh, Plan Commission Case 2025-14P, Site Plan Approval for 8201 to 8209 Skokie Boulevard, presented by Chairperson Paul Luke.
Well, it's been a long night. Good evening, Mayor, members of the board. As the mayor alluded to, this is case 2025-14P, Site Plan Approval at 8201 and 8209 Skokie Boulevard. At the September 18th meeting of the Plan Commission, we reviewed the case for Moments Notice Services LLC for a site plan approval for a five-story mixed-use building. It includes ground floor commercial space, sixty-six residential units enclosed, and surface parking, and stormwater retention at the above address, in a C-X core mixed-use district. Regarding the parking, staff explained that Skokie Boulevard is designated as a retail street and requires ground floor retail. Total parking provided has been previously entitled through the development agreement. Attorney for the applicant explained that the intent was to have at least one parking space for each residential unit, but parking rental rented separately from the base rent. The attorney also clarified that twelve outdoor spaces will be for guest parking and retail use. The petitioner stated that a property management company, Peak Industries, Peak Properties, will handle the leasing and property management. The petitioner described the possible amenities included in the building for residents and confirmed that there are no intention to block or paint over the windows of the community space visible from the street. At the meeting of the Paris Commission October 8th, they reviewed the elevations and approved and awarded a certificate of appropriateness. Therefore, the Plan Commission requests that the site plan approval be approved by a vote of eight ayes and one member absent.
Okay. Are there questions for Chairperson Luke? Trustee Schechter?
Yeah, my first question, which I am making a point to ask every time we have a development, but what kind of, what kind of due diligence did we do in terms of this particular developer? You know, does, does he have a, I mean, I saw the website, they have, seemed to have other...
I believe that, 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 what you mean by due diligence, what do you mean?
Their ability to get the financing to start on time.
I have to remind the board that, well, she clarified that.
So, the financial feasibility of a project is not within the Plan Commission's purview to review when they review the findings of facts and the standards?
The village manager has something he'd like to add.
We, we did look in great detail into his experience, the developer's experience, and the financing, and how this project is, is gonna be financed. And we're confident that they're moving forward and that the project will be successful. There's always subject to market changes and things beyond control, but they have demonstrated time and time again their ability to build a very similar project in similar environments. And we're pleased that they chose this Skokie Boulevard corridor to create our vision of the transit-oriented development and really bring that corridor to even more life. And so we're very pleased that they're partnering with us.
Trustee Schechter?
Yeah, and I just want to add that I am so pleased that this development includes just under ten percent affordable housing, so six out of the sixty-six units are gonna be affordable. And affordable at the sixty percent AMI level, all of them. So, this is better than our ordinance in terms of the percentage affordable. It would have otherwise been five percent. And on the affordability, it would have been half and half, at sixty percent and eighty percent. So, this, this really proves that, you know, a developer knowing, I'm assuming, or maybe you can tell us, actually, I won't, I won't put what's involved as to why they...
Yeah.
What inspired them?
Chairman, Chairman Luke and trustee, I'm gonna ask the developer to come up, sir.
I missed a question, so sorry.
So, that's okay, go up and...
The question is, what inspired you to do so well on the apartment?
I'm the chairman and owner of MNS Construction.
Thank you.
Rural State Developer General Contractor in Chicago. Trying to get out of Chicago.
I'm glad you came to Skokie.
Jody, while you gather your thoughts, and trustee Schechter's gonna re-ask the question. I just mentioned that we were so pleased that you're helping us accomplish the transit-oriented development vision that we have for Skokie Boulevard, and that you have done this type of project. It's really your specialty, and done it over and over again in similar environments. So we're so pleased that you chose Skokie. But trustee Schechter had a specific question for you.
Yeah, no, I just wanted you to, if you could, share with this board and with everybody listening, what inspired you or allowed you to put in nearly ten percent affordable housing at a, at a, at the sixty percent AMI level, which is really the recognized for when you're doing rental housing, that that's the upper threshold? And how did, how did you do it?
I, I just simply believe in it. That's simple. I can afford to give away ten percent, and I love it. My mom struggled growing up, and she didn't have money. So I like to help people.
You're paying it forward.
Yeah.
No, we appreciate it.
That's the answer.
Other questions?
Thank you.
Yeah, I would just add-
Trustee Robinson?
That I remember when you first came for the project, you committed, made the commitment, and thank you.
I led with that.
I know you did.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I appreciate it. And I'm hoping that, you know, this would be the first of at least a couple.
I hope so too, and this is not far from where I live, so I'll enjoy watching, watching it go up.
I grew up in Lincolnwood, so it's okay.
Nice, very nice. Other questions for the developer? If not... We need, sir? Yeah, any action item, we'll open it up for public comment.
That's a couple of very severe concerns about buildings of this type being built in Skokie involving gridlock of traffic. As somebody that lived in Chicago for many years, my first comment is that this building is higher than other buildings in the neighborhood, which tend to be three stories tall, not five stories tall. There doesn't seem to be enough parking. If the CTA discontinued the yellow line service, the plan to use the Oakton Street CTA station would suddenly no longer be an option, and this would be left as an elephant with no appropriate parking for the units that are there. There needs to be at least one parking space per unit to plan for that contingency. In addition, I can take you on a tour of Chicago anytime you'd like, Mayor, and I can show you tons of buildings like this with the retail floors empty, not creating tax revenue for the city, not, not creating the things that are there. And I, I just think that these things need to be considered fully, because you don't have a lot of experience with buildings of this size being put up all over the place. So, again, to summarize, you know, experience shows that a lot of these buildings don't get rented on the retail level. I'm happy to take you on a ride anytime you'd like. And then, you know, most of the buildings in that area are three stories tall. And then, there's a severe parking concern, if, especially if the CTA were to stop service at the Oakton Station, which is a very likelihood, given recent news.
Thank you, Mr. Daka. Anyone else? Ms. Yamouchi, are you in, in the queue there?
Okay, I just want to prove that I can sometimes say something nice and appreciative, which I am, I know we're not supposed to address the developer, but I think this is terrific news, and I think it does prove that there are socially conscious, but still smart business developers out there who are willing to put in the planning that goes into onsite affordable housing, which we all agree the village needs more of. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Yamouchi. Any other, anyone else who would like to address the board? I'd like to thank the Plan Commission publicly for their work on this. This came on a strong recommendation. It was unanimous, and I believe all but one of the Plan Commissioners was present to approve it. So we always appreciate and are mindful of strong recommendations from the Plan Commission. We appreciate that. Anything else before I ask for, was there a motion in a second? No?
Yeah, there was.
I think there was a motion.
Who moved? It was the two Levis.
Yes.
It was the two Levis. It was Lissa first and then Kimani. Thank you. There's nothing else?
Oh, wait, wait, we need it. We need a motion.
We do? Okay, do you want to just reverse it? Yeah, there we go. Trustee Kimani Levy and trustee Lissa Levy. Okay, we're reversing it.
The motion to approve.
Motion to approve, to concur with the Plan Commission recommendation for 2025P, I'm sorry, let me start over, for 2025-14P Site Plan Approval for 8201 to 8209 Skokie Boulevard, moved by trustee Kimani Levy, seconded by trustee Lissa Levy. No more discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll? Trustee Robinson?
Aye.
Trustee Iverson?
Aye.
Trustee Lissa Levy?
Aye.
Trustee Pierce Sloven?
Aye.
Trustee Schechter?
Aye.
Trustee Kimani Levy?
Aye.
And the motion passes. Thank you, we will look forward to this.
Thank you, Barbara.
Yep, thank you, and thank you to the Plan Commission and to staff.
That concludes my report.
Thank you, Chairman Luke. The next item, the last item on our agenda is public, public comment. We will again allocate time for up to ten speakers, beginning tonight. Speakers who have spoken at the first open comment, people are limited to one time or the other, not both. So that is a new ordinance, or a new change to our, not ordinance, to our pilot new public comment period, public comment rules that we started in May. So again, just to be clear, we have the book, I call them the bookends. We have what typically is thirty minutes tonight because of the attendance. We went longer, and we can do that at my discretion or at, if the majority of the board requests it. And that's bookend one, and then bookend two is what we're going to do now. And then we always allow for five, up to five public comments when we have an action item. But beginning tonight, the bookends, you can speak once, but not both. So, Ms. Pat?
My name is Shelley Pat. I am a longtime resident of Skokie, and just wanted to, you know, reiterate just a few things that people had said in public comments throughout tonight. I think just one theme, and I'm so glad that the board has recognized this, about just people in the community wanting more information, but particularly around this issue of crime. It really seems that people just want to know what will happen when a crime, when a crime is reported. And whether it is a crime between people, like the hate crime incident in the park, or if, you know, if a masked person comes to your door and, and grabs you or breaks your car window and pulls you out, or any of these number of other things, yes, de-escalation is important, yes, advocacy is important, but what everyone, I think, is really saying is, we want to know what exactly the police will do. Not down into the weeds, like, I definitely respect what Chief Barnes was saying about, you know, the investigation depends on the particular circumstance. But, you know, one thing I felt very reassured about in Evanston was yesterday Mayor Biss said that after the horrific incident at Oakton and Asbury, the Evanston Police were able to get the badge numbers of whoever these federal agents were. Do we believe anything will happen after that? Who on earth knows? But Mayor Biss said that the Evanston Police Department is starting a criminal investigation against, didn't say what the crimes were they're investigating, but we know bystanders reported people were assaulted and abducted. And that the Evanston Police Department will report that or will investigate that the same way they would investigate anyone assaulting or abducting anyone. And I think that is what people need to hear, not necessarily what the result will be, or what the effectiveness will be, or whether we're legally able to stop it from happening, but just more about what will happen. And then I just also wanted to thank Mayor Tennis and the board, you know, just for all of this amazing work you're doing. I mean, this has been a very long night, and you probably don't want to sit here another thirty seconds listening to just me thank you. But, I mean, this, this is such really hard work, and as you said, Mayor Tennis, that everything is unprecedented right now, and you guys have all just waded right into having to shepherd a very large community of tens of thousands of people through all this unprecedented everything. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pat. Mr. Jarvis?
Good evening. My name's Matt Jarvis of 4400 Emerson. Yeah, I just, I don't think I'm gonna get the applause that Emmy got, but I, I did appreciate her sentiment at the very end, especially. I think what, what, I mean, at least I want, and hopefully other Skokie residents want, is just to see our police getting caught trying to do something. I, I don't know anything about this anecdote about them being told, or somebody being told that the police can't do anything for them. Hopefully, that's just their interpretation of the words that the police gave. But, you know, like Emmy was saying, you know, with body cameras and the gravitas that police officers hold in a courtroom when giving their testimony, it's very meaningful to be given on the public's behalf. And, yeah, it would be fantastic if, you know, I know it's a precarious situation, but if the police could insert themselves in between or even witness or potentially stop bodily harm being caused to bystanders or other people who are in the surrounding area getting caught up in this enforcement action, but not really part of it, so to speak. I don't know where the line is. I feel like the legal advice being given seems very black and white when being told to our board, but, you know, clearly the federal agents are operating in a very gray area. If I learned anything in 2020, it's that qualified immunity allows a lot of latitude to police officers in their line of duty. So I would hope that this would be a good opportunity for our law enforcement to utilize that latitude given by the courts for the protection of our citizens, even if it's against other law enforcement units. So that's, that's what I have to offer.
Thank you, Mr. Jarvis. Ms. White?
I'm Kathy White, long-term resident of Skokie. I wanted to comment on the 8201 Skokie Boulevard thing. I am so excited. I am so excited that it's going up. It is going to be something that is going to support the future of Skokie, because we need more high-density housing in walkable and areas, and areas of public transportation. And it has the affordable housing in it. And it is incontrovertible evidence that we do not need to continue coddling prospective developers. We can ask them to come in and be part of the creation and the development of a community. That can be the way we ask them to come in. We want places that encourage people to apply to be trustees and be on commissions and participate in the local park district. This is really good stuff. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. White. One thing I'd like to say before I ask for a motion to adjourn, and I thought I heard trustee Robinson start to make it a few minutes ago, so we'll give him first nod at it. I do want to say, and I want to end on a positive note, but, and to me, this is positive. We are, we, when we took office, we promised that there would be regular reports to this community about the status of the hotel project. I want everyone to know that we are, continue to talk about it. We continue to monitor court action on it. And there will be a report to, at the, at the first board meeting in December. The first board meeting in December. So we had one in May, we had one in August. I think we've had two or three so far. But I just want to put that on the record, that we are on track to have another one. And the reason, there is another, there is some more court activity that I know we talked about at one of the last reports. That court activity through the parties involved is taking place in mid-November. So we will be giving a report at the first meeting in December. So with that said, I'd like to thank my colleagues again and our staff for the great work tonight. Thanks to the residents who came out. You make us better. And trustee Robinson, you moved to adjourn. Did I hear that?
You did.
And who seconded? Trustee Pierce Sloven. Will the clerk please call the roll? Trustee Robinson?
Yes.
Trustee Iverson?
Aye.
Trustee Lissa Levy?
Aye.
Trustee Pierce Sloven?
Oh, yeah.
Trustee Schechter? Trustee Kimani?